Meeting the August fourteenth meeting of the Poolsville Planning Commission. Do we have any? Any schedule for comments on the citizen?
We, we have no citizens comments. Today unless anybody. Here wants to, wants to speak, alright.
Any announcements from staff?
So we will, the main announcement is that we will have potentially Russell Branch next month depending on they're still working with the county. So they might come back for their preliminary plan. At that time. Anything else that we wanted to add Wade?
Not for me, no.
Alright.
Very good. We can look at the June 12 minutes. Because we have the three of us were here that meeting, but we, we can't do anything about last month.
Right.
Is everybody had a chance to read the June 12 minutes? Any comments, questions or edits?
I make a motion that we approve the June 12 minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Push the July 10th to next month. Alright. New business, we have an applicant request. For amendment to the PIA for the Willard project.
Yeah.
Wasn't going to come up, yep.
How are you? This, I'm Jim Clifford, I'm the attorney for the Willard family and the, the folks that own the, the piece next door. With me tonight for the first time ever. In front of you is our builder, we have a builder and it's mid Atlantic. And they are, where are you, where are you staying, where is your headquarters?
We are in Rockville.
Rockville, okay, alright, okay. It's Tim Hartman and he's, he's here to, both Wade and Niles thought it would be a good idea for him to explain. Why he is asking us to make, he's making a request that we make a change in the PIA. Just to do a little quick history here. We carried the ball on this, Billy and I carried the ball on this all the way through till. We found a builder that would work with us and do the things that we had promised and all the things that have been discussed over the years. So that we could customize this development to be. The scale and the look and the layout that we've always talked about. Tim's group is willing to do that and we hardwired that into the contract that that's the way it had to be done. We're not builders and it was always a little nerve wracking to put a whole plan all the way through without a builder's oversight. And knowing what they can and not do, can do and cannot do. So there's, there is a few issues that we need to get worked out and we're going to meet with John Strong and with Niles and Wade and our team. And try to work some of those little issues out. But it is, the lots are very small, they're 4,000 square feet, we did that to keep the scale where it was supposed to be kept. But what we're finding out is, is as the builders start to roll up their sleeves and get into this a little bit. They're trying to make the houses work on these lots. And we told them is really our preference to have as many first floor masters possibilities or options as, as, as can be. So if an older person is coming in and you know, we're like, we'd like this to be a Poolsville centric development where people who live here want to stay here. Or people who grew up here want to have their first house here. And this, this whole idea of a master bedroom is an important option. But we're finding that there's some technical difficulties with small houses and master bedrooms so on the first floor. So Tim is here tonight to talk to you about that. In the context of the impact tax, if you guys remember, we had asked to perhaps get a townhouse. Application to these small houses so that they have the same impact taxes perhaps a townhouse would have. And in fact, a lot of these houses will be smaller than the townhouses that are being built. But we were being charged for a single families without any regard to the square footage, which is by the way, the way the county does it too. So you all made that accommodation, but without us understanding what you were doing, we didn't realize you were going to say it was an all or nothing. It appeared that the way the language reads, it says if you don't build all of them. At 2,000 square feet or under, then none of the discounts apply. We're here to see if there's some room there to, to change that so that it would apply on a house by house basis. If they build a house 2,000 square feet or under, then it applies, if they don't, then it doesn't. That seems relatively fair and it gives them still enough incentive to, to try to go with the smaller footprints or smaller houses. But having said all that, Tim was going to explain to you about why they think they got to go over 2,000 square feet on some of the, on some of the lots there.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I, I brought a couple of examples of homes, if I, I don't have enough copy.
Just share them with them.
What I'm going to give each of you is. Two layouts. And both, both layouts are a 38 by 38 foot. One of them is 1,900 square feet. One of them is 2,300 square feet and some change. But I think this is the best way for me to kind of. Help articulate the point. And I, I understood from the very beginning when, when I was talking to Jim about the importance of the scale of the community. And making sure that kind of everything fit within the, the overlay zone and how it was kind of dreamed up and thought it would look like in the end. But the challenge that I'm having is I kind of sit in, in tried to design homes, which I'm doing, I'm designing all new product for the community here. Is this just a limitation of the 2,000 square feet? If you look at, you could put them side by side, look at the, the 1,900 square foot version versus the 2,300 square foot version. You kind of just start on the second floor. I think it's important to, before I get into that to say, look, the house doesn't actually get any taller. It doesn't get any wider, deeper, there's not one more bedroom, there's not one more bathroom. What it does is, I think it meets the limitations that have kind of been created for the community by the, the size of the lots and the building restriction lines. But it allows me to then. Provide something better to the community, to the ultimate, you know, consumer, the citizen that's going to live here. And when you look at these layouts side by side, you say, okay, they're both 38 by 38. But when you look at, for instance, the owner's bathroom on the smaller unit, I have a single walk-in closet. I have a side by side vanity, I've got a shower that backs up to a toilet and I've got a little linen closet. And then I've got an owner's suite that's 16 by 14. Same house, 300 square foot larger, now this owner's suite gets a his and a hers closet. It gets a his and a hers sink. The shower and the powder room are not kind of like, they're next to each other, but the powder room's in a room, not just kind of like sitting out there. In your secondary bedrooms, all of your bathrooms, I mean, all your bedrooms become walk-in closets rather than just kind of. The side by side door slides in front of the other one, very shallow. The laundry room is able to be kind of maneuvered around and brought off the exterior wall, we're able to kind of give a. Some privacy to the secondary bathroom, you'll notice that there's two sinks and then there's kind of like a separation wall so that somebody could be in the shower and using the bathroom while somebody else is using the sink. And then generally the bedrooms all get just a little bit larger, a foot larger in each direction. When you kind of go downstairs, I took what would have been a bedroom for office den, something like that and creates a much larger guest suite now. I'm not saying for certain that that becomes a master suite, but by having the ability to kind of just fill out the envelope, we're able to provide, you know. Not just a home, but a home that's going to live very well for the folks that are going to ultimately purchase it. Great room grows by a little bit, your kitchen grows by a little bit, you actually pick up a real dining room. And these are kind of conceptual in nature. But it is kind of where we started the, the planning process here. And I thought it was a really good example of what the extra 300 feet would do for the home without actually. Making the home. Comedy more people. And, and really.
It's the same box.
It's the same box, right, so it's the same bedroom, same bathroom, same thing I'm kind of already saying, but it just feels to me as a guy that does this for a living, like. This house is a house that somebody would prefer to live in and frankly, that little bit of extra square footage is nominal in terms of the cost. I can actually probably provide that extra 300 square foot for such a small amount more than what I'm already going to spend to build the smaller version. So this is kind of the, the question that I'm asking and I'm not sitting here to say everything's going to be over 2,000. I don't know how many would actually go over 2,000, this is one of the larger footprints that I, that I have, I mean, some of the footprints are 32 by 45. You know, they vary to some degrees, but being able to kind of fill out that footprint completely allows you to. Provide, you know, the buyer and ultimately the people that are going to live here, you know, with. The, the right space, not just space, right, I'm not saying I want to build 10,000 square feet, I mean. It's where can a 50 square feet matter, a bathroom, an extra couple of cabinets in the kitchen.
This is in the way of an explanation on why we're here to talk about over 2,000 square feet. The, the basic question is will you guys allow? The, the PIA and the, the legislation to be. Let the assessment be handled on a, on a house by house basis as opposed to saying all of the subdivision has to be on 2,000 square feet or under. We're finding especially with the rear, with the front reload garages, he's got a bigger problem. The rear loaded garages are not quite as much of a problem, is that correct?
Yeah, I think the rear loads. Kind of lend themselves to having a first floor master a little bit better than the front loads. Because the front load, when you have limited depth, you lose so much of the house to the garage. It becomes difficult unless you can get to 45 and 50 foot depth in the house, it gets very difficult to find a place to tuck that master in. Which I'm not saying we couldn't do or won't be able to find a way. But I think the rear load becomes your really great opportunity to provide something because you got more square footage on the first floor itself. Without really losing that square footage to four, you know, 400 square feet to your garage. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but. Within the footprint itself, you know, you have more opportunity to do that. So if you think about it for a second, you were to just take either one of these 38 by 38 plans and you take the garage out of it. All of a sudden that leaves you a lot more room for a master down situation.
The other, the other aspect I could go into or we could do it one by one, what would you rather do? The other one has to do with the monument, entrance monument, did, I don't know if that was explained to you or not.
That was in what we shared, that is just the modify the, to allow for the entrance feature being built by the builder and maintained. By the town for 10 years, being maintained by the homeowners association after 10 years, that was the modification.
Is that typical or atypical?
That is what we've, the 10 years is typically what we do.
We've always had before.
Right.
Due to being in the overlay zone, you're allowing an HOA.
Right.
Other subdivisions, with the exception of townhouses, don't have HOAs at present.
Yeah. And as staff communicated, there, there was no issue with that change. From the staff's perspective.
By monument, we mean signage.
Yeah, what says the community, yeah.
Something similar to what, what's at Brightwell.
Yeah.
We would of course include that in, in the HOA documents and in the budget. The townhouse is, that's a 2,000, right, that's not, that's part of the.
I'm sorry, the, the.
For the reduction in the impact fees.
Yeah, so it's, it's to the, it's so it goes from, from roughly 13,000 is the impact fee or the connection fee. For a single family home and then it's a, a right under, I think it's 9,000 per. Right around that range for the townhouse fee, so that's the difference between the fees, is that what you're asking?
I'm asking you, are we, are we, we're tying, we're giving them the townhouse. That's tied to the 2,000s.
Correct, yeah, so how it, I can read it just exactly where it says, connection fees are charged on equivalent dwelling unit basis. Projected for the project in equivalent two, but in lieu of existing impact fee schedule. Each of, each of the dwelling units being constructed in this project shall not exceed 2,000 square feet of taxable finished space. Which will, and then it defines it as being above ground, just for the purposes of this discussion. And then it says. The connection fee shall be the rate in effect at the time of payment based on the connection fee paid for a townhouse dwelling in the town of Poolsville. So then it gives the rate, so it's 9,190, so it's slightly above 9,000. So that is, the two are connected to it because of. The square footage.
And that section of the PIA came from our code.
It came from, so it came from the recommendation first of the planning commission and then it was voted on by the commissioners. To have this be the arrangement that ended up in the PIA.
And we didn't create a new.
We didn't create a new fee and we didn't create a new legal definition within the code or anything like that, it was just, this was the. Approval of the commissioners in the way that this PIA was written.
And just out of quick, I had a, a question, could we have said 2,400 instead of 2,000?
Right, so the 2,000.
Yeah, the 2,000 came from the basic townhouses that we have in town, they're, they're approximately 2,000 square foot. So that's kind of where that number came from and it came from Jim Clifford also, as we were discussing the size of what the Houghton Homes would be, so we kind of tied it all together.
Yep, just want to make sure that was, that was my understanding, I just didn't, wasn't positive, thank you.
What is the connection fee for a typical single family home?
I will get that for you, just give me one second.
It's just over 13,000.
Yeah, it's 13,000. Yep.
The county has their own version that's over 50,000. And we base, we base our townhouse fee over the. Single family detached based on sewer and water usage gallons per day.
I, I think one concern of the, of the committee is that with the current agreement, we have a very, we have a high level of confidence that none of the houses will be over a certain size.
Right.
If we change the agreement the way you guys have asked, we don't have that confidence. Right, I mean.
Except that we have the, you know, we've already imposed a 4,000 square foot. Building lot, it's already a recorded plat and the, the plateau shows the building lots at 4,000 square feet, so that kind of enforces. The scale of the house, it can't be beyond the boundary line, so the real protection that we needed is, is the size of the lot. I don't know that we really need to do more than that to be sure that the houses are of scale. And what he's suggesting doesn't really even change the scale of the house, it's, it's an internal adjustment, not an external adjustment.
I just want to be sure that. That, that if it's open ended, then, then you know, what, what actually could happen, I'm not a builder, I don't really know. But I, I'd want to see probably some more language in there, you know, setting, setting some, some better guardrails than just, you know.
Well, remember this, whatever you decide, if the house is built over it, even now, if the house is built over 2,000 square feet, you pay the full impact tax. If it's under it, then you don't, you get the discount, correct me if I'm wrong there.
So because, because it's all or nothing, would mean if any of them are over 2,000.
One of them is over 2,000.
All of them would have to pay the higher fee.
It doesn't keep them being under 2,000, it's just incentivizes them with the use of the impact tax or the connection fee.
Yeah, I mean, it was a high level of confidence that somebody was going to want a house that was less than 2,000 square feet.
Well, they're willing to pay if they're going over 2,000, but they're designing houses as well under 2,000. So let me, can I jump in here for a second? You know, all through the whole process since 2015, we've talked about you having smaller houses, 2,000 square foot, actually 1,800, 1,700 was what we really had talked about. And Clifford and Willard, Mr. and Willard both all testified to that. And that was the premise on how all this stuff was granted and we went through the whole process. So that, that kind of puts the planning commission in a bind of not being able to hey, say, okay, well, we're going to, we're going to make sure we have some guardrails on this like Brian said. To say, okay, 2,400 square feet, what, what is, what is that magic number and how many is it going to be? You said the rear loaded garages don't need it, so what are we talking about? Specifics, I think we want to include in this. Wade, are you asking how many houses of the 60 will be 2,000 or under? I think there needs to be an assurance that all of a sudden, they don't all turn into 2,600 square foot homes. Well, they can't possibly physically do that. But you know what I'm saying? Yeah, yeah. But I hate, I hate to chase that ghost because I know it's not possible, but. But something more specific. Open ended. Well, the whole purpose of the discount was to incentivize, not to force. It was just to incentivize the builders to, to keep it at 2,000 or under. I don't know that anybody, is there anything anywhere that says you have to be under 2,000? Just your testimony has said you would. That's what we were trying to do and we're still trying to do it, but what we're finding out is, is with these downstairs masters, which I am really trying hard, the, the community. Made it very clear to us that they would really like to see downstairs, stair masters, especially the older couples that want the, the house. So we're trying the best we can, but what they, what they're telling us is that with, with front load garage, because it takes up a big chunk of the house. They got to use more of the upstairs to fill it out to be able to, to do that. And that's not something we anticipated. The, the back, the back load has a garage that comes out and there's room for that because it doesn't come out of the, the house so much. So this is just the lesson we're learning as we're getting into it with, with the builders. So right, we weren't trying to mislead you and we haven't tried to mislead them, it's in our contract. That we, it was 2,000 square foot houses that we were targeting, but they're coming back with a very practical request and we felt like we had to bring it forward. But those, those 4,000 square foot lots are, I think everybody can see that you're not getting a big house on that, you're only going to get these houses to scale. That was our guardrail, that's what we did, we made, we made small lots.
What are setbacks on those lots and what is max coverage?
Just give me one second and I'll pull it up.
Thank you. I should ask while I'm taking notes on this, do I get to keep these?
You can.
Oh, good.
All over it. Otherwise I'm going to give you.
Pre-sale contract with me here.
So the, so the, as we talked about before, the minimum lot size is 4,000 square feet. The minimum yard width is 30 feet. With that building line, the side and rear setbacks are five feet. The minimum side setback for a corner lot is 10 feet. The minimum rear lot line is 20 feet. But, and then the minimum front line set on a public road is 15 feet and then on a private road is 10 feet.
Just using the setbacks to get you to where you need to be because. Lot configurations change.
Right.
Yeah. And do we have, I don't even know if we have, I don't think we have a lot.
There is not a lot of coverage for the village overlay.
Yeah.
It's sort of an urban product, you know, I think we've always said that, it's, it's small lots. You know, in configurations with mews rather than grids and it's, it's a very nice layout.
Lots of notes, any more questions?
I, I have a lot of thoughts. So I'm going to start by pointing out the obvious and it is highly concerning to me. That you come before this board and you say these are 38 by 38 and they're the same. And that's rather disingenuous because I'm looking at them and the 1,900 square foot box A is 38 feet across the back and yes, you have 38 feet on the side, but that includes an eight foot porch. So by my calculation, it's a 38 by 30. Hold that thought, we're going to go to the other one and it says 38 by 38. However, you haven't included the porch on this one, so if we increase it, that now becomes a 38 by 43 box. So. I'm a little bit upset that you come and say, I want to look at these apples to apples and it's clear that you're fudging the numbers to begin with. And that doesn't give me a lot of confidence down the road to trust that if we make good faith, you know, decisions that are not solid and tight. That you will honor those, so I'll start with that. I'm a math person, like immediately, I'm going to notice the math discrepancies. That being said, this is a missing middle project. This is a project for retirement, this is a project for starter people. So I'm also confused why we're looking at four bedroom houses that will fit a family of five. That is not a retirement home, that is not a missing middle starter home. So I'm a little bit concerned that. I understand that as a developer, you come looking at what your profits will be. But this project from conception to the moment you stepped into the door. Has been that missing middle and has been to meet the needs of starter families and retirement. And those are two to three bedroom homes and those are homes under 2,000 square feet. So again, I'm a little bit confused why we keep creeping, creeping, creeping into homes that will house a family of five. So that's where I'm going to, I think I'll take a moment to pause, I would love to hear sort of remarks or feedbacks to this point because. I have a lot of concerns with this initial presentation.
Which I make about the, the square footage is not being exactly the same, it, it, look, it's fair. It's, I wasn't trying to be misleading, I basically asked my architect to say, fill this box out at 38 by 38. When he came back with it, he's like, okay, if I could fill the full 38 by 38 and go over 2,000 square feet, this is what it would look like when I opt them to 2,000 here, so. Their point, it was not intended to be misleading, it was really just. Kind of a quick sketch to articulate how the bedroom sizes could be changed, how the house would live a little bit better. Without, without the kind of those constraints. What was the other point, I'm sorry?
Why is it four bedrooms?
Oh, well, look, it's three bedrooms with, we've got this bedroom four here, it could not be a bedroom, it could be an office, it could be.
You're on the first floor now?
Yeah, down on the first floor, upstairs is a three bedroom, is a three bedroom, two bath situation and this could be a bedroom, it could be an office, it could be. A guest suite, it could be, a lot of things not necessarily have to be bedroom four. I would say that to me, the missing middle, you know, is product though, and that's not to say that. Because I put one product in front of you that's got three bedrooms and possibly a fourth or a loft or whatever you want to define that as, which. I had an inspector tell me, Tim, it's got a bathroom and a sprinkler, it's, it's a bedroom, you know, walks like a duck, talks like a duck, so fine, maybe it's a bedroom, but. It's also not what you see when you go around the market out here and what has been built. It's far smaller than that. You know, much more kind of modest in what the price would end up being. And I mean, obviously, of course, as a builder, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm delivering the product that I believe that the market wants to see. And not necessarily. Do that in a way that's trying to be. You know, opposite of what your views are and what you're trying to achieve, I want to, I want to meet that. My thought here was that I could meet what you've asked for and I could do it a little bit better if I had a little bit more flexibility on the square footage. I think that having, you know, first floor masters are a fabulous idea, I mean, Jim and I have been talking about that since day one. But some of the constraints on the footprint make it difficult to kind of serve all the parts and pieces that we need to serve. But I think a, a single family home. You know, that's, you know, in the $700,000 range is a. Is, is about as good as you can come by almost anymore. And it doesn't even feel like missing middle to me because I don't consider myself a poor man and that would be a big stretch for me, but it just seems like that's where. That's where the market is anymore for, for homes, you know, if I was to build the, the monstrosities that you would think I'd want to build out here, it'd be twice as much money. So it's not, this isn't trying to push these things out of the missing middle, this is to really provide that missing middle with a product that, you know. That they deserve.
I, I will tell you, it has been really difficult to get builders to sit down with us and talk about these small houses. When they knew they were going to pay the county 50,000 impact fee and then this, they just would rather build a big house. So it eliminates a great deal of them, we didn't want to deal with any of the nationals because we knew they wouldn't be flexible about their house designs. So I mean, we've spent two years going through the market, looking at houses, trying to find the right builder and it's, it's hard and even now, you know, there's a little tension. And even now, you know, there's a little tension because we, I'm with you. You know, we'd like to see these houses, 2,000 square feet and under. And I know that there's no requirement that they be that way unless they want to get this, this tax break. But, um, that's what we're trying to do. And, uh, it's just that I also promised that we would get as many houses built with a first floor master as possible, uh, and the garage issue, uh, is what's forcing this to, to happen. Um, what you guys decide to do today, uh, will, you know, maybe, maybe have some impact. Uh, maybe it won't. I mean, it's, it's a matter of dollars and cents. It's not a matter of, um, if the market comes in and, uh, somebody wants a house that looks, you know, they show them two houses and they want the, everybody wants the best, you know? And they look at that and it's, takes them from 1,900 square feet to 23. They got to have the flexibility to do that. They just got to know they're writing a bigger check. That's all. Uh, we, we can't control the market. We try. We did that as much as we could within the design of the subdivision. Remember that a half acre lot is what, we are the mathematician, but it's 20,000 200 something square feet. Uh, these are 4,000 square feet. So you really have to understand that this is a very constrained building envelope and with all of the setbacks and enforcements and other things that all affect the building envelope, um, this how, this development will be built to scale. No matter what we do here tonight or anywhere, uh, it's going to be built to scale.
I appreciate that this is a difficult situation and that especially with county impact fees of, you know, 50,000, that it makes those margins so tight on smaller homes. But I also think that it would be wrong not to acknowledge that we've had five, six, seven, how many years of discussion have we had in Poolsville? I mean, we.
About this project?
About this project? I mean, I remember the original explosion.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there has been a lot of discussion and there has been a community sort of understanding of what your vision was, what the planning and zoning and what the commissioners have all tried to help make happen. And I got to tell you, I, I understand that you're wanting to provide as much as you can, you know, for this square footage and, and those dollars, but at the end of the day, this is not a starter home. This is not a retirement home. It's, it's just, it doesn't meet the missing middle. And I know we can talk about markets and what the markets are doing, but the markets are doing that because the type of homes that we're discussing aren't being built. So you can't tell me that, oh, there's no buyers for these when they're just not even being produced.
Right. This would be the closest it comes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the reasons I gave you.
I'm not saying that there's no buyer.
I'm just, I need, I personally am a little bit taken aback by this. And I will need some time to, to think on it.
We're, we're not here to, to ask you to reevaluate our preliminary plan, our final record plans. Those are already done. Uh, what we're here is to discuss the tension that we've had in trying to build this product uh, and pay the taxes that are being required of them as if we were building a big product. So that's, that's really what we're here today to do, not, not to go back and, and try to uh, go through, Wade, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is, we're not doing anything to, to change the existing approvals. We're just talking about in a PIA where it refers to a discount in the impact taxes. Uh, that may, may or may not be applicable, uh, because we are not going to be able to build all 60 houses under 2,000 square feet. Uh, and if, under the present law, if we can't, then we get no tax break at all. And we go forward with the full tax as if it were a, a single family dwelling of Kettler sauce. Um, that's, that's the only thing that's here today. Is it all or nothing? And if it's not all or nothing, what, what accommodations could be done to allow some kind of a discount for every house that is built under 2,000 square feet? That, that's the only reason we're here today is to talk about that.
So before we even brought this up, you could have built these models and just wouldn't have gotten your, your credit.
Excuse me?
Before today, before this, this public, uh, PIA discussion.
Right.
You could have built these exact same models and you would, just wouldn't have gotten any.
That's right.
Even on the ones that were under 2,000 square feet, you wouldn't have gotten that. And that's what you're asking is that
Yeah.
you still build these models because you can.
Right.
And it, we still allow you to have a $2,000 or a or a $5,000 discount, uh, in the, in the impact fees.
Right.
Connection fees.
Yep.
For the ones that are under 2,000.
Right. I'd like to continue to incentivize these guys to keep it under 2,000 square feet. Uh, and that's why I didn't, the all or nothing approach that came out was a surprise to me when it was done. Uh, I'd like to get away from the all or nothing. If you, uh, have some percentage in mind that you want to discuss with us, uh, let's do that. I mean, we're here to try to work with you on this. Uh, and, and honestly, actually, we're not giving up on this idea of trying to, of trying to keep this community. Um, you know, Cape Cod's and, and Craftman style homes of, of the 1950s style, uh, that's, we'd still like to do that. Uh, but they've got the reality of the market and we're, that's a tension that we're trying to work through.
So I guess the question to help us then is to help me understand then is if it seems to work better with the rear load garage.
Yes.
And so 2,000 square feet should be no, should not be a threshold. It's a, a problem on 2,000, on the rear load garage homes. But there's only, that's a small portion of what's supposed to be built, right?
Yeah. I want to say, I think there's 30 front loads, two of which we would not build. And then maybe there's 28 rear loads.
Was, that's right.
Not 50.
Because of the alley both sides. Yeah. Okay.
Um, but it, so it is pretty close to 50, 50, but it's not exactly.
The, the reason I ask is because it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's not a rear load, it doesn't look like 2,000 square feet or smaller is an option.
Well, look, anything is an option.
If there's no master bedroom on the first floor.
So that's, that's, that's kind of what we're, what we're presenting with today, which I think might be jarring a little bit to us is that we're, we're kind of a, we're just starting a discussion of what, what this might be, right? But we're seeing one option that would work only on a rear load. You know, of less than 2,000, that you're saying that, you know.
Well, actually the, the house I put in front of you is a front load. It's not a rear load. What I'm, what I'm saying is, is that I think I can get to the, I can get to a first floor master with the footprints that I have.
Yep.
What I'm saying is, is that if these footprints fit on the lot, then I've got the hot requirement and I don't, can't do any more bedrooms. Can't do any more bathrooms, but I can fill out that footprint and make that house live better. And pay more to the town for the, if I'm willing to do it. I just, that's really where I was going. It's like, I just feel like if, if I'm limited and I have to cap the square footage at 2,000, I'm going to give up aspects of that home that I would want the buyer to have.
Right.
Um, I don't know that the, that makes me more money, but I think what that does is it keeps the community successful.
Right.
Um, I don't know that I'm going to be able to charge all that much more money for this one than that one. They feel so similar. But I know that I can give you more with this one for probably a nickel more.
Right.
I can give you for that one.
Um, just, I'm, I'm, I feel like we're, maybe not this, what you're asking isn't the issue, but I feel like we're losing a little bit here in that, um, the, what is a good 2,000, 2,000 or less than 2,000 square foot home? Then what does that look like?
Well, I, I, I have had this conversation with Jim.
Isn't, isn't that what's in front of you? There's one there that's 18 or 1900 square feet.
Yeah, but he's proposing that the, that you change that to 2,300 and it makes a big difference in the livability. It didn't look like it was two separate models. It was two separate versions of the same model.
Yeah. Isn't that what's in front of me?
Most part, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
But he's saying, he's saying he doesn't want to build what's 1,900 square feet that he showed us. He wants to build the 2,300, the same basic.
I'd like to have that flexibility to like make, make those rooms a little bit bigger, make that bathroom a little bit better, bigger. Yeah, I would, that's pretty much what I'm asking for is, I mean, I'm, I had to stop basically filling out the house at, at 1,900 square.
Right.
Because I was just out of, out of room.
So I'm just curious, is there, is, is there in your mind a viable model that would be less than 2,000 square feet? Or are we really talking about just not doing it anyway? And if we are, then it doesn't matter what we say in the agreement. You can just go do it.
No, I think there's viable models that are less than 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of in the middle of trying to design that, work with these concepts.
Listen to what she has to say.
So yeah, I do think there is, I just don't, I mean, everything I have other than these, this 2,300 that I showed you is under 1,900, is under 2,000 square feet. Um, and I, before I gave the architect or any, um, kind of leeway to go over it, I wanted to have
Yeah.
conversation with the town.
Yep.
Let me give you a little more history here. Uh, up until about a week ago, we've never talked about anything other than a 2,000 or less square foot house.
Yeah.
That's where we thought we were. When they started to go through their feasibility study and they got their people to look at the stuff that we had put on, put out, that's when they came up with this idea that if it's a front load, we're not going to be able to do master bedrooms on the first. I wanted, and Billy and I have talked about this, we wanted everybody to have the option to a first floor bedroom in every house. What we're finding out is if it's not a rear load, that's a tough order. Uh, and it may be that we've lost 50% of the, the, to, of the units to, um, all the bedrooms upstairs. Uh, I was still fighting to try to get at least one bedroom downstairs. And, uh, so they, they did the architectural work, uh, to see what they could do. So up until really a week ago, it never occurred to us that it can't be under 2,000. It can't be 2,000 or under. This is, this was news to us. But it makes sense.
Well, hang on right there because when, when the, the PIA, it says specifically, the commissioner of Poolsville have granted water and sewer allocations to the property with the following conditions. Each of all of the dwelling units constructed on this project shall not exceed 2,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So you can't really go out right now and build a 2,300 square foot under the current PIA as you have agreed to.
From me.
The way our attorney wrote it up.
What's that?
The way that, uh, Mr. Gallow had written it up.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and look at that, Wade. I'm not sure.
I just read it four times. I know to make sure myself, but that's exactly.
I know the approvals weren't that way, but the PIA may not have followed the approvals. We have to, we'd have to look at that.
Yeah.
Uh, and if it is, it is. I mean, let's face.
But I agree. I just want to have clarity on that issue.
Yeah, but I, I thought we were here today to just talk about impact taxes at this point. Um, but.
More than that, according to what we've agreed to in our, in the PIA.
Yeah, yeah. So we need to look at that. I, I will tell you contractually and discussion wise, up again, until just the other day, uh, we thought that's the track we were on. So it wouldn't have given me any dis, any concern. Um, but we're trying to make this deal work and we have a builder who's willing to work with us. Uh, so when he said he needed to talk about 2,300 square foot houses, I thought we better get in here and talk to you about it. And that happened during our discussion with, uh, with Wade and Niles, that we thought we better get back in here and talk about the PIA.
I think it makes sense and I, I mean, the process makes sense. I understand where, where we are in, in this. I do want some clarification. May take us some, uh, some time to get that. Um, I also know that we have two commissioners that were sending me text messages this morning, making sure I know their viewpoints were heard and I think they'd really be part of the conversation as well. So, um.
We want to give you what you want.
Yeah. And we, and we want to be, we want, we want to succeed, right? I think we're both kind of going in the same direction. Just, you know, we want to feel good about, you know, the, yeah.
Is, is the, obviously I'm new to the conversation. Is the 2,000 square foot number, was that was that a somewhat kind of arbitrary number picked?
No, you know, we asked earlier, that's part of the, um, impact fee or the connection fee for townhomes and that's the 2,000 square foot was tied to that, right? I mean, 2,000.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So that's where the, that number comes from. Um, we wouldn't want to give you a connection to a townhome fee for a bigger house, basically.
Oh, but if a townhouse is bigger than 2,000 square foot, then it doesn't pay the townhouse rate if they use the same family rates?
That's right.
The way the townhouse rate is applied to is, is based on the type of project it is. There are, I mean, unless I, I.
No, and you're, you're correct. And we did that through a five year study of water usage within townhomes relative to single family homes. And that's how the calculation was developed about 10 years ago, probably.
Water usage, not the size of the townhouse. It's related to that.
And the situation here really is less about the fee, is more incentivized to try to get to the smaller unit.
Yep.
Understood.
And probably in the grand scheme of things, it's not much to move the needle. I mean, it's $5,000 or under 5,000.
All right.
So the percentage of what you're selling is probably not going to really move anybody's.
No, I, I mean, I.
Point five six percent if you're starting in sevens.
I'd be happy.
You're welcome. I looked it up.
Real, real damage is done at the county level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We tried very hard, uh, and it's interesting, but we tried very hard to get them to, to talk to us about that and they wouldn't. And then last week they passed, uh, impact tax. Uh, I think they passed it, at least introduced it, uh, to lower the impact tax. If you're tearing down an office building and building a, a multifamily house and a unit on top of it, uh, then you get a lower impact tax. But they wouldn't even talk to us about.
Yeah.
And yet all of them agree that it shouldn't be based, it should be based on square footage, not on the style of the house.
But they wouldn't.
Couldn't get any traction.
Yeah.
So for what it's worth, I could just say a couple of things about Mid-Atlantic. Um, cause I, I, I hear where you're coming from, Ms. Heber. Um, I've been in the business since I graduated 2003. I was a home builder for probably 12 years. Then I started doing land acquisitions and then next thing you know, that's where, where I'm at now. Been with all the nationals, not all of them, but three of them in that time. And, uh, I just recently came over to Atlantic, very different world here than where I'm used to being. Um, locally owned, still privately owned, the, uh, the second generation of the business now. They're all, um, grew up in Rockville, offices in Rockville, still live in Rockville now. Um, it's a, uh, the, the daughter and her husband have taken the business over a couple of years ago. And so we're not, you know, we're not the national that comes in and builds five, you know, five. It's like, this is, this is our backyard. This is where we've been. It's the only place we do business. And we, um, Prince George's County, where the company was kind of born, they've become a very aspirational brand down there. Um, and I'm, you know, as I came over here, I wanted to try to take us into new markets, but we are a company that, you know, really doesn't just say this, they, we delight in delighting our home buyers and delivering quality product. And almost every job we do, we, we design new product for it. We don't want the same old stuff, the 20 year stuff. We want to build nice things. And, you know, we're going to do a product, um, in about a year and a half. That's going to be a 30 foot wide by 50 foot deep product. So kind of narrow, missing middle, the whole 600 square feet.
Not here.
No, that's not here. Wouldn't even fit on these lots, frankly. It's too big.
No.
Um, and we'll do, you know, big customs too. Terms of product, but we are a hundred percent local. Everybody lives here. Everybody works here. There's no sending your, your profits to the mothership and running away kind of thing. It's not, it's not who we are. So I'd like to say that we're different in the sense that, you know, we're not, um, you're not getting some sergeant sent in here to sell you guys a bag of goods that you will never see again. Uh, I'm going to be, I'm going to be out here developing this thing and then seeing it through all the way to the end. And if there's a problem, I guarantee you, I'm going to be the guy that has to come in here and talk to you about it and nobody's going to do that. So we are a little bit different in that standpoint. Um, and we are very much a locally owned, uh, and local business.
To, to go back to Wade's point, Wade, right now you're saying regardless of the preliminary plan approvals that, whether in the, we don't do resolutions here, but the PIA agreement right now limits them to 2,000 square feet regardless of, uh, what the connection fee is.
The granting of the water and sewer does that, yes.
Water, okay. So if they wanted to go above 2,000 square feet, that's what they're going to have to get changed. Not exactly.
Well, exactly. It's, it's both actually. Yes. Yeah. Because the way it's written now, it, it locks you into that 2,000 square foot. So that's, that's what you're trying to change.
Yeah.
So, so how much and how many?
Okay. That hadn't come up in our last meeting. Okay, that hadn't come up in our last meeting, so, so just want to be sure.
Yeah, and that, that would be, um, if that changed, that would be something that would, you know, where we could keep our assurances of where, where this project is going to go, I mean, we know we're limited by the four thousand square foot lots, but.
Right.
Yeah, the more assurance is the better.
I don't think, um, and if you want me to put something together, if we'd need to come back, uh, I can do that. I, I really don't think I'd go over maybe even, I'm going to say twenty-five, that, that one I showed you was twenty-three and some change. That thirty-eight by thirty-eight is basically the biggest footprint I have. I don't.
For this project?
Yeah, I mean, I had some forty by forties, but I'm not even sure I can fit them, I might have to shrink them down. So let's just say, for instance, it was a forty by forty, and let's just say for the sake of this argument, which I know might be a little inaccurate, that the twenty-three and some change is a real square footage based on that, that box. Maybe we're at twenty-five hundred at the most on a forty by forty, I can't imagine I'd go any larger than that.
We don't want you going larger than that.
And there's quite a few product that I, I, I'm, I'm going to be thirty by forty, thirty by forty-five, that we were having conversation, uh, I don't think I'm going to have to go this low, but some of what was shown on the plan was twenty-four by thirty-six, which depending on how you look at that, necessarily the missing middle house that you're looking for either. If I could say that in a politically correct way.
Any other questions that we need to get feedback on tonight?
No, I'm looking at your floor plans.
Yo, I mean, they're all concepts right now.
No, no, I mean on your website.
Oh.
Actually, that's a nice, nice to look. Haven't listened to my tires.
I was listening too, I thought it was, um.
Well, we, we went and looked at their work product, uh, went down to Charles, and I went down in Charles County and looked this up. It's a very good quality, it's what the Willards wanted, uh, so that, that took us a long way into wanting to do business with them. Uh, but this whole floor plan, uh, square footage thing is, um, something we got.
All right, so we'll, we'll, obviously, there's nothing to decide tonight, um, and we get some clarification. Wade, you're, are you, you're certain, or do we need more clarification?
That's definitely, and that's in your packet as well, related to the, to the, um, uh, water and sewer allocation, that's the first bullet under the PIA section has that language in it, in the memo I wrote.
But I do have a meeting with, uh, Attorney Gallow tomorrow morning, so I'm, we're going to bring it up and discuss it again.
Great, great, thank you, Wade. Did you have any questions anymore, or questions about the project's, um, progress or anything like that, timeline or any of that?
Saw these, a big piece of equipment over there.
Yeah, they're going to check for rock, that's a, that's a soil, they're still in your study period, they can walk away, uh, at any point. Uh, so, uh, we'd like to keep them, but, uh, we also know that they got to make business decisions.
Sure.
I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak for anyone else, I'm not insensitive to the challenges that you all face, um. I, I really look forward to, to looking deeper on your website and sort of thinking about this and, and hearing what Wade and them have to say, and I mean, thank you so much for coming, but this is a little bit surprising and a bit to take in, so.
Understood, understood. Thank you for, uh.
It's not surprising that Kevin, he just joined us a couple months ago, he's, yeah.
But no questions at the moment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm just not clear, because what I heard was the footprint, thirty-eight by thirty-eight, somehow some would be larger than others, um, is that?
It's the same question, that's the same question I had. It didn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, basically, essentially the, the, the upper floor is kind of pulling back, right? So that the, if you, like, if you look at this, can you see how much roof line I have here?
Oh, sure.
Now, it makes a great point, this is actually a little bit longer. It stands out. But I also didn't pick up all the square foot stuff here.
And, and was there a maximum, a maximum square foot, Brian?
Uh, right now, it says two thousand square feet max. Yeah, and we haven't, we haven't defined that ask yet. Because we, we didn't, we said, we had a conversation tonight about the PIA, which is really not the limiting factor. It's the.
It's the.
Water allocation.
So it's how the water allocation is tied to that two thousand square foot limit, that's the key, that's the key conversation point.
The only place that appears is in the PIA. We, if we're going to fix it or not, uh, we'll be addressing the PIA.
Gotcha, so I, I thought that was in the, a different section of the.
That, yeah, it's, this was all, this whole discussion about this limit is connected directly to the PIA, it is not a code for, it is about how this PIA was written.
No, I understand. Thank you for asking, Mr. Eck, help me help clarify. Okay. I think we're good, if there's anything else you guys wanted to cover, thank you, yeah, thank you guys three times.
Thank you.
Probably see you in thirty days or so, twenty-eight, whatever.
Yeah.
I'll be in touch, Jim.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to old business, following up on our cultural arts district discussion.
Yeah. We'll talk.
Um, so I don't know, so I presented a lot of information in my memo, and so I was trying to answer, Lexi, at the end of last meeting had given a sort of range of different things to look at, so. Some of this was a general discussion we had about the sign ordinance, so I included in the, in the actual agenda packet, you can find the full sign ordinance, and what I included as a link in the, in the memo was some design elements or sign elements they use in Georgetown, for the old Georgetown, um, historic district. Um, just to kind of keep the packet smaller, I just did it as a link, um, and I can put it up, uh, if you would like on the big screen. Give me one second.
Yeah, everybody can see our sign ordinance is, uh, pretty in-depth.
In the sign ordinance, there's also a couple of things that are technical changes that need to be made, I noted one thing where it made a reference to a subsection that does not relate exactly, so I think there's a couple of things that need to be ironed out, but that's, that's maybe we do a technical, uh, review and, and pose that stuff, but let me just pull this up. So, basically, because I wasn't quite sure how you wanted to go with the sign ordinance, because the discussion that Chuck had brought up, which was, it was mainly Chuck who talked about this, and again, we can push this one off and talk about some of the other stuff, was trying to have signage that was more in keeping with the, with the, um, historic nature of that sort of west end area, right, you know, right near Elgin and, and Fisher, that area, rather than the more, uh, commercial and more, and more modern commercial signage that you see on this end. So what I tried to do in trying to find these commercial signs for Georgetown is to kind of talk in explicit terms, um, about, uh, to make this bigger, they talked about like, um, specific things, so they talked about like the locations, the signs should, the signs should not obstruct or damage architectural features or ornaments, so it's, again, it's putting on more requirements directly related to the architectural nature of the building versus our current, our current sign code talks in more broad ways about that and not directly connected to these, what it basically says is it must be consistent with the, um, design guidelines, which are, which are in, which were in the master plan and so on. Those also don't talk about signs explicitly, so part of the way that I thought about this issue was to connect the, um, uh, the design guidelines in with what the code says to kind of create potentially, if this is the way you want to go, we can go a different way, a design requirements for that area that, that speaks specifically to, to signs. So that was one approach, we could also look at amending the code if that's how you guys want to go, but this was the way that I thought it made sense to kind of think about what features of signs do we want in this area versus the rest of the commercial.
Do you think our code, um, do you think there's a gap in our code about the signs?
It's not necessarily a gap in our code, because as I said, the, the sign ordinance itself is quite extensive, it's more about, it doesn't speak to precisely the types of issues that Chuck was talking about last time, so it's, it's a question of, of how would you want to address it more than anything else?
Ask if the, uh, if the rest of the board has a, feels like there's a need to redo the entire sign code to, to speak to more specifics, or if we just leave it as, as is and address specifics as they come up.
Right, I mean, well, and that's where I'd say in the design guidelines, so we could look at, that would be the way that, that I was thinking about it. It's, we will want to at some point look at how the cultural arts district might have different requirements from a design perspective, then include signage in that, depending on how you want to do it. Right, especially, yes, that can connect to the other thing, which is the form-based zoning, so all of the, so if we go with a form-based zoning approach, that's how we, we would be zoning the, the arts district anyways, so it would all, it would have this look and feel approach that these design guidelines then could build out, so that the actual zoning of it would match basically the design guidelines. And I included some more links about form-based coding, what I, I couldn't find exactly communities our size that had, that had implemented form-based zoning, but I found some smaller communities or some districts that kind of fit into that. So that was the way that I was trying to think through it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense, I, I, I looked at that South Carolina one.
Yes.
Form-based, and they had pieces about signs.
Yeah, they had pieces about signs, about sidewalks, all of that kind of stuff, kind of what we were talking about last time as well.
All-encompassing if you go form-based.
Yeah.
If you don't, then you gotta either ignore it or.
Yeah. But that was the way that I was approaching that, and I don't know if you want to have a further discussion on that, or if you want to wait, I know, again, like Chuck specifically had specific things he wanted to express there, so I wasn't sure if we wanted to look at some other stuff as well.
I mean, I, I think his concern was that we're talking about a mixed-use area.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't probably want to dunk in a McDonald's-style sign, uh, you know, in front of a two-story apartment, second.
Right.
So, um, you know, we, we, I think we need to, I think it makes sense, so we we probably need to come up with some exact, specific criteria for that area, wouldn't need to be applied to other areas of town. Or could be, but wouldn't need to.
Yeah.
I don't know that I think that we need a full overhaul, but I do agree with some of the things that have been brought up with regards to like illuminated signs, especially since we have clear-cut hours of non-operation during the evening. I'm not sure that I, the elimination is a personal pet peeve of mine, um, and I know, you know, I will admit that that is an opinion, but I, I do think that there are some holes within the sign, signage code that we should consider or look at, but like a full overhaul, that seems excessive.
Ooh.
Um, I, wasn't there an issue recently with, um, and by recently, I mean like two and a half years ago, uh, locals wanted to put up a large, like.
Banner.
Ban, yeah, they'll call it a banner, and there was a big issue with that, like temporary signage, what I, I haven't, I have not finished reading all of.
Right, and.
I, that sort of temporary signage, especially in that sort of situation, seems reasonable, and yet there was a big problem with getting it approved for some arbitrary.
It was oversized.
Yeah, yeah, but like, we're also talking about a giant two-story commercial building.
I know.
Where that might be appropriate, especially if there were certain guidelines, like I'm looking at this and there's.
Give you another, for instance, is on the, uh, building that, that's owned by the Odd Fellows. They wanted to paint a great big mural on the side of the building, and it was larger than, than your current regulation.
They wanted to use letters and numbers, and that's a sign, and the sign cannot be painted on the side of a building, a mural can, but not letters or numbers.
Right, that seems.
So that's a good example, yeah.
That seems pretty trivial, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
So, I, I do see that there are, there are possibilities where this could be modified in a way that, you know, allows for, you know.
And that might be.
Mural that has a couple of letters, you know.
And that might fit into more of a review of not trying to necessarily overhaul how our signs work, but look for inconsistencies or issues that have come up based on past cases or things like that.
And wouldn't, that's not something they could have applied for a special exception, do you?
So there is the, the, the sign board, and I'm not sure how.
The sign board does.
Right.
It doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, it doesn't exist, so, but like in the code, there is this, you see what I'm saying, like it's a, that's a good example of something that does need some adjustment, because the way the code is written implies the way that the signs board would arbitrate something like that.
But there is a variance process for it, yes.
Yeah.
I just, in my mind, I'm thinking of, like, I know in Detroit, I've seen like a UAW mural on the side of a building, that is very much in touch with sort of like that area, and it's, it's such a nod. And under our guidelines, that's, that mural is a sign, it says UAW, like.
Yeah.
There's also the Mill Pouch Tobacco.
That's, I was just thinking about it.
That, that's a hundred percent a sign on the side of a building, right, so I think that, yeah.
And so that's where we could look at for those type of gaps, and then present at least what we see as those type of gaps.
I don't, I don't know how you write to that, um, that's going to take some thought, but I do think that there is, if, if not to write to it, at least to have a mechanism for, you know, human intervention, like.
Well, one way, yeah, go ahead, Wade.
I was going to say, so it was, the, most of this code was written in the eighties, and it was very restrictive purposely, we've gone back, and with multi-businesses being in, in a center, there was not an allowable sign that was over four foot by three foot that would accommodate all the names on the sign, so I would think that was about eight years ago, probably, we redid that portion of the code to allow, allow multi-businesses, uh, to be on one sign, made it nine foot tall and changed it. So it's all changeable and, and, and a lot of it needs to be updated for today's standards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so maybe that's how we address that, maybe we look at for those areas, and I can get with Joan and Wade, who have more of the history, and we can look through for these types of issues and, and look at it that way. But what do you?
Just hoping to not have to read sixty-six more, babe.
That's, well, well, right, that's what I'm saying, so what I'll do is I'll pull out those sections that, that, that address those specific inconsistencies, and then do it that way, what do you think, Wade, does that make sense?
That's fine, I think that we need to kind of do this with, you know, the signs, the form-based design, the parking, the uses, start breaking these things down and, and have an individual discussion on each one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and yes, in that part, we can, we, I definitely think we can address that that way.
Um, it'll be September, though, I have a feeling we're going to have some visitors in September.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Anyway.
Um, so yeah, so that's the sign code, so we can go back, so I guess the question that, that I have right now, and maybe we just wait and put it off, is you want to think about something like design guidelines for signs, or do we want to wait until after I pull out what we want to do?
I think, I think in this area is going to have to be specific.
All right, so.
Yeah, this is definitely going to be, because you don't want, like you said, dunking down, it's a, a major sign, yeah.
So, so, so let me look at these again, and maybe we can have a meeting where we talk about what we're, what specifically we want to see in that area, and, and pull language like this and see how it applies to the current zone, so. Well, right, and so the form.
And the layout.
Right, and that's where I think we have to talk about, with the form-based stuff, again, I was trying to present ideas, but I think what we want to talk about is with that, is sort of trying to build out the look and feel of it all, so, so we want to talk about streets, this, the streetscape in that context, we want to talk about, uh, we had a discussion last. We want to talk about, we had a discussion last time, and I put this in the memo as well, about the setbacks and the and the lot coverage. So there is no setback requirement as we, when we were looking through the code and the conversation I had with Wade for in the commercial zone, in part because we want to encourage businesses to build out to the to to that property line so that you can have people walking by and looking what's what's in the window and that kind of stuff. There's a lot coverage requirement. It's 35%. So when we think about, you know, form based zoning, that's where we can think about pulling that all together. What do we want to see?
For instance, it it's going to be dependent on the lot, right? Because if you have a very narrow lot and you say 35%, well, then you got the city bitty building. And the and and L R and and it's going to be what they call shotgun.
Yep, yeah. And so there's things like that. That's the way that I was thinking of addressing the form bases. Maybe we pull in each element as we go, as we talk about them. So we have a sense of what we want to do on signs. Another part, I think, which is what Chuck wants to talk about at a future meeting about parking also relates to the form base, because then that can discuss about how the streetscape will look and all of that kind of stuff. So that was my thought. And that's why I tried to give you sort of examples of how other communities have tried to implement these things by looking at streetscape, walkability, and how they try to create a structure. There's a good image, and I'll try to find it again, where it shows like regular zonings, you know, form based and so on, in terms of that footprint idea. And so that's why I tried to do with the examples that I found. And in the case of Virginia Beach, they spelled out that zero lot line type type of form based zoning, where they say explicitly that the setbacks are zero to fill out that profile. So that's another thing to think about.
And let me just throw in and in some of our cases, because a lot of our easements, we a lot of the roadways are script of easements, we're gonna have to come up with a defined from for instance, the gutter pan, it shall be X amount of feet setback. So that you get to that zero lot, because there's not a dedicate, they're most likely that unless the property gets subdivided, it'll never have that.
Well, that's why we had talked about, John, you developing a kind of a concept site plan for that CAD area.
That's correct. It's I I've started into it. I just haven't gotten to where I'm happy with it yet.
Yeah, because I I think that everybody needs to kind of see that to visualize, you know, where sidewalks, how wide that green space is going to be, street trees are going to be. Then you pull the billions up and how what's it gonna you become give a feel so our vision can start taking shape.
Right. And then is that covers any questions on that part? You'll like you if something
No.
Okay.
I'll bring it up when we get to it.
Okay, then the the other part of what we what Lexi had brought up and specifically deals with some of these specific uses and things like that. So I just want to touch those briefly. Like, for example, I found Prince George's definition of a drugstore pharmacy. That was one of the ones that Lexi had called out of maybe adding to the definitions and the use chart. So I just wanted to see if that was consistent with what you were looking for and if that made sense to you.
That made sense to me.
And then I found another one, another definition that just said what is approved by the state, basically, is a pharmacy. So that was another way of approaching it, but I thought that addressed it. The second part was about like maker spaces and arts and things like that. So I found Blacksburg has what they call the live, work, sell arts overlay zone. Okay. And so they have specific definitions that kind of encompass all of the different types of art. Now, it didn't what you would specifically asked about was metalworking.
Well, I think that that's encompassed under Part C.
Right. And so that's like, but I just wanted my question here was do you want it more explicit than that, basically? Or was this sufficient as sort of definitions for what you want in this in this zone?
I think I I think I really I I like what you came up with here. I like this. I don't I don't know that we need to expand it to this, but so I don't see any harm.
Right.
But when I was when I was trying to explain what I thought should be added to it, the makers space sort of idea was very much under what C is, which is you know, artists engaging in visual arts, including but not limited to painting, sculpting, photography, folk art. I mean, you could expand it to be, you know, metalwork or whatever. Not necessarily, but it I do like, what was the other part that that they share the studio? I would like to include that they can sell their work within the studio, but that it's not for the sale of other artists. I really particularly like that.
Yeah.
That space that's being used by the artist is a joint space, I guess.
Yeah. So it says workers work for other artists may not be offered for sale. This does not include a studio or that stuff. But anyways.
I do think it's funny that they said that this does not include body art.
Yes.
Specifically called out not body art.
Yeah. So you so what you what I'm hearing is we want you want to go with C as the definition in our
I mean, what what do you
Code or something along those lines?
I think that having sort of a defined space to create within the cultural and arts district makes sense. And currently, there is no
Right.
No code for that. There is no item that encompasses the creation.
Yeah, I think there's a tie in to the the Maryland State Arts Council.
Right. And we can pull back what they what they specifically want for that part of things, but this was trying to find a good definition.
I I would also like to maybe expand this to include the ability of the artist to offer lessons.
Sure. Yep.
Right? So you could have, you know, small, small classes.
Right.
Which is such a good service to the community.
Alright. And then so the other definition that we we sort of talked about a little bit, or you talked about in two different ways, and I tried to combine in one was the multi use stuff. So what I found was Howard County's definition, which they basically say is a downtown, in their case, a downtown mixed use is a land use designation that permits any use or combination of uses permitted under their section of the code. In other words, and you read the other section of the code, basically what it says is here's the list of uses that are allowed in this zone. You can do any combination of those uses within a mixed use develop. So that's the way of encompassing of saying all of the use. So in our case, it would be all of the uses allowed in the arts district could be combined in a mixed use development. So that was the way that I was trying to address your question about it. We could go more specific. Again, my thought was to just get your feedback from her.
Just my feedback?
Your the royal we.
Let's roughly understand. In a mixed use.
Yeah.
We could combine any of the uses of the cultural arts.
Right. So any any ones that are designated as being a permitted use, you could combine them in a mixed use develop. So say, so the example that we talked about was first floor retail, second floor residential. So since apartments are called out as, or at least that was the discussion that we had last month was apartments were a permitted use. Then somebody and then an applicant could come in and say, we want to do a mixed use development that includes retail and residential, both of which are permitted uses in the cultural arts district. So that was the way of addressing it without having to go through and list the type of mixed uses that you'd want in the zone. So it's a way of trying to reverse engineer basically a mixed use.
I don't like this.
Okay.
I don't like this at all. And I will tell you why. It's not because of the like, the approach to like blend uses, that that was not the goal. The goal was to restrict residential. And I think that coming at it from a restriction of residential is a better approach than saying all mixed use within the allowed is is.
And that's where I noted above, as Chuck had noted in the in the spreadsheet, limiting the like basically not allowing single family homes, for example, in the CAD. That was his suggestion. So it depends on what like to limit residential, I guess the question is do you want it to only be apartments? Is that what you're saying? If there is a, or do you want none? And again, this is, I'm just trying to get where you're coming from.
I really hate restricting too much what someone can do with their property. I don't I don't like that. Which by the earlier conversation, you might not have gotten that. And I understand the confusion there. But I also could see where someone could come in and say, okay, I'm going to put in, you know, a six unit efficiency apartment setting, and on the corner, it's going to include a coffee shop. And according to the way this is written, that's totally fine. And I I think that with the discussion that we've had, that one, no single family residential within the CAD. I think that makes sense. And two, that living, while it should be allowed in the CAD, should be restricted to second levels.
And that could be, yeah, that's, yes.
So this this was my understanding. Now, whether that's right or wrong, or I'm completely, you know, bananas, I don't know. But that I think that with the mixed use and specifically discussing residential, the the direction was those two items.
Right. And and again, this was approach of just trying to find definitions. So whatever we want to do, that's that's what this conversation is, is I think there for is. So here's the way that I can envision that. One, we could say we could have it as part of the definition or the way that we define it for the CAD, you know, either come up with a definition that is only second floor apartments as part of the definition that gets applied is the use. So the use is second story apartments, right? And write that in and then have the, you know, however, we wanted to find the mixed use. If we wanted to find it, you know, however, we want to find it, we want to limit it to a certain subset of uses, we could also define it that way. Mixed use in the cultural arts district is X.
So would residential been accessory used to a business?
Yeah.
Also, you can come in, you limit square footage, you can
Yeah, there's various different things we could do. I was just trying to get out exactly how you wanted to, how you wanted to approach it.
I know, right? So quite good.
We need to, I think, snow the Snow Hill example. Two meetings ago had something like that in.
Yes. And so let me
That might be a we could
I can read that. Give me one second. They had their list. So yeah, so this sort of goes to areas of limitation of uses. So they say, A, a maximum of seventy percent for residential uses. So this is the way that they approached it. So this is sort of the opposite of what Lexi is is talking about. So we could go the opposite approach, but they say a maximum of seventy percent for residential uses. Residential uses may be limited to single family, two family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, live work units, residential portion only in townhouses. And then they have a minimum of thirty acres is for or thirty percent is for open space, and then the rest is is commercial. So we could do an approach where as sort of John was saying, where we could do it the other way around, where we could say a a maximum amount of for residential uses is fifty percent or forty percent or whatever, whatever we deem reasonable, and then limit it to multifamily dwellings, second floor or whatever, you know, sort of try to define it that way. So that was the that's sort of the the approach as well.
It doesn't pick out the coffee shop on the bottom floor of a six story or six unit.
Well, that so so then, when you're talking about areas of usage, we could define like they might, it might have to be, again, depending on what you guys are looking for. Commercial use has to be sixty percent of the property or seventy percent, and then it's the area used. So it could be, so that would define. But using her, you know, using her example, that's, you know, it depends on what you're asking for. And how you want it, how you want those percentages, you know, divvied up or how you want those approaches divvied up. You know.
I want to think about it.
Yeah, like I'm in my mind, I'm thinking that I could think of some cool ideas that would be, might be a little more than forty or fifty percent of the entire structure for residential upstairs, you know. So I don't know if I'd want to necessarily exclude it that way, but.
Right. And I can, I can look for more approaches. It's just a question of
So one of the things that's gonna have to be considered in a residential the second level of residential is how many units you're gonna have, right? You do have a limit on population that you can take into the system.
Right.
So you're gonna have to kind of think that all through, determine how how many units could you support in that district?
Anyways, yeah.
If everybody decided we're all building at the same time.
Hmm. Okay. And we could and we could write an approach that at least explains to you guys all of those different factors based on, you know, a review of the current area and various different measurements that we could do.
It's working in the right direction.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Okay.
Are you ready?
Okay.
My motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Hey, guys.
I felt like it was coming.